Foster Gloucester Regional School Committee, thank you for being patient while we were in executive session. At this time, can we please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Should we wait, hold up your applause?
Yeah.
So, our favorite part of the entire school committee would be student and staff recognition, so I'm going to hand it over to Beth, Mrs. Kaling. Is Ms. Hurley here?
We're going to do basketball first.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I think tonight breaks a record for kids we recognize in one night, and next month it'll be even worse, in June probably even more. There's been an awful lot to celebrate this year. So tonight, we're going to start with boys' middle school basketball. PMS regular basketball's season record was eighteen and two. Todd, sorry, first, can you come up here with us? I don't know if he told you guys, but he used to play unified for us when he was in high school, so I have a deep, deep place in my heart for this guy. So eighteen and two, they were the 2024 Northern Division Champions. This is the first time in fourteen years that Pontigan's Middle School has won the Northern Division. They also were state finalists, runner-up in the state championship game. This is the first time in eighteen years to make it to the state championship. So congratulations, boys, that was tremendous. So we're going to start, this is the coach, Todd French, assistant coach Kyle Cullen, is he here? Okay. Manager Max Martz, is he here? Yay! Max, Max, if you can come, all these people want to congratulate you. Yep, congratulations. So we're going to start with the sixth graders, Gavin. I am alone. No. Justin Moore. Luke Passarelli. Kayden Young. How do you say that? Nathan Wondice. Mason Martz. McKinley Martz. Seventh grade Gavin Scott. Yeah, I know. Did you guys win baseball? You did, congratulations. Jackson Tucker. Now to the eighth graders, the leaders, Jared Donahue. Basil Rockwell. Miles Wright. Colin Miller, forget the leadership part, I just said. Ashton Finkelstein, Ash, I love this kid. Good job, Ashton. Dylan Zar. And one very special young man named Gabe Munjan is a one-thousand-point shooter with a total of one thousand twelve points. Is he here? He also scored sixty-two points against one socket during a regular season game, so is he here? Oh, I want to meet him. Congratulations, boys, we're so proud of you. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Disney's Newsies Junior. This is Pontigan's Middle School's fifth musical production. [Music] 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 Myrick Ness. Sophia. Schwarzen. Schwarten. Elena DiMazzio. Angelina Diat. Zoe Dempsey. Tegan Devine. Gabe DeVito. Brianna Diffusco. Gillian Dixon. J- yay! Sage Doyle. Peter Dunn. Cara Elkerton. Elderton. Elderton. Richard Farina. Isn't she look like she belongs in the first grade? She's on the way back. It's like towering over. Ina Facto. Stella Fountain. Isla Godro. Ayla. Byrne. Bren Goddard Laduke. Juliana Gangolaski. Carissa Guerrero. Kelly Hayes. Joshua Henderson. Reagan Jeffrey. Noel Kramer. Jack Laffel. Ethan Lapierre. Madeline Long. Cam Mackey. Harper McAuliffe. Emily McGuire. Aiden Migno. Zachary Moody. Brooklyn Moretti. Gianna Muller. Zoe Munson. Karen Nerny. Charlotte Pellegrino. Dominic Panini. Kelly Pacillo. Audrey Pine. Sarah Pollard. Scarlett Pozanski. Abriana Reichert. Avery Rube. Lea Rotolo. Aliyah Sacco. Eva Saet. Matilda Shippey. Anastasia Zidzik. Zidzik. Josie Silva. Brooke Silva. Nora Sorrentino. Sofina Spaziano. Magnolia Sullivan. Will Thorne. Liam Tracy. Odette Chapati. Will Warren. And Ella Wolf. Alrighty. So first up for the high schools debate. Pontigan's High School's debate team was crowned champions as Saturday, March 2 state league championship. Pontigan's team of Hope Godro and Sarah Ozlouski, if I said that right, finished first out of twenty-eight total teams competing in the novice division of parliamentary debate after finishing first in all three rounds of competition. In addition, Hope was crowned as the individual champion for finishing first out of fifty-six total competitors with eighty-two total accumulated speaker points. Sarah was also recognized for her sixth-place finish individually. This is Pontigan's first year competing in the Rhode Island Forensic League debate competition, and we are so proud of this incredible achievement for our team and so proud of Hope and Sarah for their much-deserved success. So will Hope and Sarah please come up? So next, next to the art kids, are they here? Can you get your show and tell? Art kids. The school committee and the art department would like to congratulate the six Pontigan's High School students that won the state anchor award this past weekend at Rhode Island College for their incredible artwork. Senior Skylar Leonardo. Juniors Sidney Howard. And freshman Marley Bellotti. Congratulations to all of you. And I believe lastly tonight is construction management. Nine Pontigan's High School construction management students spent part of their federal vacation here in school working to earn their Department of Health and EPA lead renovator and remodeler license. Rhode Island and surrounding New England states have a large percentage of housing stocked with lead paint. This course teaches students the correct methods and requirements to safely remove lead paint during remodeling and give them a national credential that allows them to supervise this work. These students now have the means to protect themselves, their workers, residents, neighborhood, and their families from lead paint exposure. Following nine students are the only students in the nation that have earned these credentials. That's incredible. Aiden Digno, he's not here. Peter Givazia. Speech. Congratulations.
In 2004, I was a teacher in one socket and I was at a Teacher of the Year conference and, can you hear me?
Oh, I was at a Teacher of the Year conference and the superintendent informed us that forty percent of the incoming first graders had lead poisoning in the last six months. So that means it could have been a hundred percent because after six months it starts to go away, which is catastrophic numbers for any community. Rhode Island has traditionally led the United States in lead poisoning cases, and it manifests itself in a lot of different ways. It can show up as ADHD, it can show up as behavior modification, behavior, language problems, math reasoning, depending on when they were exposed. The students, the first thing I teach is how much is five micrograms per deciliter? And that equates to a swimming pool fifteen feet wide, four feet deep of toddler's blood with one sugar packet. That's all it takes to lead poison four thousand four hundred children and permanently damage their life forever by damaging their brain. So it's a really important thing. One of the things they learn is how to do it properly, but some of the really fast ways you get it is burning stuff with paint on it. That's the fastest way to spike your lead content. Children are really, really susceptible to this, so if we can all take a little extra care, we can prevent a lot of tragedies. One of the things they see is a contractor that lead poisoned his whole family and his six-year-old daughter is consoling him, "Dad, didn't mean to do it." It's a heartbreaking thing, and I hope no one ever has to deal with that. So this is why I've been really passionate about doing this, and my students, for the first time ever, were invited to a full scholarship to take the lead abatement class by the EPA. They've never been asked to do that before, and this is the first also in the nation. So really exciting things, obviously, in Pontigan's. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Obviously, we expect you to excel in the classroom, but you guys have all found a way to become completely well-rounded individuals, and we are so unbelievably proud of all of you. And this is why it's our favorite part of the school committee meeting, because we get to finally put the faces to the names of all the good things we hear about all of you. So keep it up, keep working hard. The nine of you, I can't even believe it, it's mind-blowing what you guys have done first in the country, and so thank you. You guys, thanks for coming. You don't have to sit through the remainder of the meeting, so if you do want to leave, you can excuse yourself. I see the parents are waving you on, but thank you so much.
Jenny Tech, she said you could have done better than I said.
We'll see you next week, we gotta do the rest next week.
Okay, so we are on number six. I move to approve the minutes of the open meeting on March 5, 2024. That's Aaron and Pat.
You don't have to yell.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Abstention. We are now up to eight, eight zero.
I move to approve the minutes of the executive session meeting on March 5, 2024.
Second.
Oh, Pat. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention.
I should have abstained. I wasn't.
Yeah, two abstentions, so it's going to be six zero two.
I was in March 5. I wasn't there either. Sorry.
So just a minute, first one is March 5. So that was seven zero one, because Eileen was here, so I abstained. The second one was minutes for executive session on March 5, you were here for that. So that was also seven zero one.
I move to approve the minutes of the Foster Gloucester Financial Town Meeting on March 15, 2024.
Hi.
19, 2024.
And that was Eileen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Madam, I abstain, Madam Chair.
You weren't there?
I was not there.
Oh, I wasn't either. So that's seven zero two.
Six zero, yeah, seven zero two.
Yeah, because she voted.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes of the open meeting on April 2, 2024.
Second.
Aaron DeBree. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, because that was in the office. That was in the office, right? Eileen. So, eight zero one, Eileen.
I move to approve the minutes of the executive session meeting on April 2, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Again, eight zero one. Number nine, approval of the updated 2024-25 Foster Gloucester calendar.
So this is version number three, four? What version?
Just two, we're only on two.
I make notes.
It's the PD day, right?
Yeah.
I move to approve the updated 2024-2025 Foster Gloucester Regional School District calendar as presented.
Second.
Mark. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Nine zero. Number 10, Sedexo Healthy High School Challenge Check Presentation. Look at that big check. All right, nine zero.
If you participate in that and please win a thousand dollars for your students here at Pontigan's Middle School. So congratulations.
Thank you.
I know. Wonder how much that costs?
Bring it to the bank.
Yes, bring it to the bank. Wow, that's great, what are we going to do with it?
We need a picture of that just to...
Yeah, and then she could take her check with her back. Number 11, approval of monthly bills.
I move to approve the monthly bills dated March 1 to March 31, 2024, in the amount of $4,715,657.10.
Oh, that was you, Shelley.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, abstentions. Finance update. Number 12 in your packet.
Do we have? So usually if there are questions, Anne Goudreau is here. If you have any questions, this is the monthly revenue expense, the update that we give you usually to show where we are budget actuals.
And the audit.
So the audit is on the next page. That one is, I gave you the letter. It is addressed to all of you. If you look on it, you will see their prior year observation, prior year recommendation, the status where we are right now, and then we have an opportunity to respond. I do want to just point out, on the first page, maybe two-thirds of the way down, you'll see on the left-hand side, it says January 30, 2024. There was a comment last school committee meeting in March that our financial statements were not completed on time. The audit is to be completed by, our financial statements are to be completed by December. We did request the one-month audit and we, the one-month extension, and we met that. So all of our financial statements were submitted by January 30 of '24 and I just want that to be clarified. Anne and I did go through this. Our previous business manager before she left had gone through the comments. I sat and went with her as well. And I'm comfortable with the comments. I'm comfortable with the status. If you have any questions, I certainly can answer them. But we are definitely moving in the right direction. We've made tremendous progress in the last two years and I also want to remind you that our audit was done with a one-month extension on our part. The last time this district had an on-time audit was 2016. So kudos to our business department, even though we've changed personnel. So.
Superintendent, there were just a few questions that I had in reading the whole report that was given to us. And some of the things that they commented on, it says, you know, have been changed. But the one that sort of shocked me the most is that on page four, in the middle of the page, it says, "During our test of controls over the purchasing and cash disbursement process, we noted that two out of 25 transactions selected for, didn't have written documentation and receipt for purchases made." And it says that the district is continuing to work toward that. I would hope that that would just be like automatically like completely nailed down and controlled.
It is. I can also tell you that when you see the prior year observation, that was prior to me being superintendent. This is a complete of FY '23.
Yeah.
The budget that we lived in but didn't create. And then if you'll notice, the status was that there were, it went down to two. Is that where it was? Yeah.
But it just, that just seems kind of glaring to me that that would just be basic accounting.
Yeah.
And then on page, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, you're talking about number four? Yeah, right, the cash deposits. Yeah, we have that completely in place. What I will say is remember the audit ends June 30. So they complete everything June 30. This was in place, I want to say September of, Anne, I don't know if you can speak, but...
Yeah, it was in September that that was in place where we have a sweep where the deposits are put into different banks with FDIC limits.
And then just the last comment I want to go on the record with is on page five at the very bottom. It says, "The school district has not implemented our recommendation." And then it says, and that was a recommendation that the school district implement policies and procedures to account for on a perpetual basis the addition and deletion of capital assets and relate, you can all read it. But at the bottom, it says, "The district is aware of the continued lack of proper inventory tracking, but isn't consistently used and may be outdated. They're going to work toward designing proper policies and procedures." So I just wanted to question that.
You can, and I think that's a valid question. That is a much bigger task. We've made strides towards it, so until you're 100% completion, they won't say that you've recommended, that you've completed their recommendation. We have summer tasks slated for people to go around and identify inventory. That has been a challenge that I've stepped into and I will admit that we are trying to identify ways to do that. The other thing that we don't have right now is what requires definitively what would be the amount that we would tag. So when inventory comes in, it's noted that there's a requisition for it. All of our technology are larger, our larger assets are tagged, but we are aware of that. Until it's completed, we have not completed it. So I will say we're working towards it, but that's not a, that's not a one-year task.
And so my comments aren't trying to disparage the business office. I know you guys have worked really, really hard with all the things that you've improved upon and that's been recognized. So thank you for that, but I look forward to seeing this being, you know, where it should be. Thanks.
Any other questions or concerns for the financial update, A or B? 13, approval of audit, RFP.
I make a motion to approve the auditor selection of Malcolm LLP as presented in our packets.
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
I do just have one. Is there any reason why we decided to go with Malcolm other than Bacon and Company? Just because of fact Bacon and Company did our previous audit? I'm not, just wondering why we're deciding to change hands?
So we, there was a scoring rubric that we had to use and we have to send this to the auditors general, just so you know that process. Anne and I were involved in that as well as our previous business manager and the primary reasons came down to, they had a larger staff. Part of our audit being delayed last year was because there weren't enough staff members to come because they come on-site. So we felt it was important, they had a larger staff. They also start the audit timeline in May. The current team we were with starts closer to August. So we felt like we could get a jump on it much earlier, hence completing the audit on time. Hopefully, I don't want to say that, but starting with a new company is, it's a bigger lift and we are aware of that, but we felt like the jump, the timeline, the staff, and really honestly, a new set of eyes maybe be able to help us improve some of the procedures that we don't, we don't have in place right now.
Thank you.
I have a master question, please, briefly. Financially, is it the same?
Right there, they're all, yeah.
Yeah, they all came in really close.
There was nothing major, so.
It was a $450 difference.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, abstentions. Bond council.
I move to approve the engagement letter for bond council services as presented in the packet.
So number 14, the letters in the packet, any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, abstentions. We're going to table 15 for right now, we'll bring it back later on today. And we're going to move right to number 16, which is capital projects update.
So the capital projects committee met immediately before this meeting. We went through an update of where we're at with the stage two application to the state. It's still being reviewed, so there's no real updates there. There were some recommendations from within the committee to move some of the projects around year over year, but not to change the grand total, which I think we're sound and will implement them. The projects that are supposed to be underway over the coming month are all on schedule and appear to be moving forward, knock on wood. So it's, kudos to the folks who are managing those projects and hopefully they continue that way. With the appointment of the bond council, we are going to be holding another meeting, hopefully next week, to kickstart any sort of bond work, to get a better understanding of the process, what we need to do, what the timeline is, and to really start to accelerate that process. So there should be some more action items or at least some more information to report back to this committee next month, once we have a chance to meet with that bond council.
Can I ask a question? On my place. I know that we were, I think, going out to bid for, we're trying to, about for the inside-out grant and I know things may have gotten delayed because, but that has a deadline that has to be completed by, correct?
I believe those bids are due April 12, so this Friday.
Oh, so they did get advertised, wonderful. That was my concern because I didn't know if we got it out.
I don't know, do we advertise or just go back out? The bids are coming back Friday.
Did they advertise? They should have advertised.
We went back out, yeah. Yes, correct, correct, yes.
Oh, so they re-advertised it, that's what I meant, so. My concern was just, I know there's a timeline to get the money spent for the grant.
Hopefully, we have a whole bunch of bids on Friday that are under budget.
Within the budget, perfect, good. Okay.
I'm not sure, anything else or Gary, we're good? Anything else that, did I miss anything?
Very nice to meet you. I haven't met you before, so, very nice to meet you.
Also worth noting that I think Gary seems to be a wonderful addition to the team.
Thank you for joining us.
The fact that, you know, Steve is able to take a little bit of extra time too is, I think, wonderful. And the two of them seem to be able to tackle these projects and the fact that they're on time and hopefully coming in under budget, we'll see.
Under budget, you're optimistic, but that sounds good.
I did leave out one. We do have some further follow-up items on the pump house project at the high school that we might not discuss in open session.
Okay. Should I hold off on public comment on all of that or do you want to do that? Do it now? All right, public comment, Walter?
What was that?
Public comment. I don't know what I said, I choked on my words. Walter, anything?
No, nothing.
Communication to and from members of the school committee?
Can I communicate something?
No.
I was very disappointed, well, I was, it was actually brought to my attention. I didn't realize it being, and you weren't there. But I was very disappointed with the lack of support from the community that was brought to Anne's staff at the financial town meeting. I had some people, if you're a resident in Foster Gloucester, I think it should be very important. I had other families that were there and said they were very disappointed to not see more staff there. Supporting, like, we gave them a 3% increase, the teachers and the staff, and we didn't have the support.
The numbers were low, all around.
Completely, but this budget directly impacts like the students and there were some families there, but it was just very disappointing and I think people reached out to me about that as well and I agree. So I think we need to rally up the troops a little bit better next year. That's all. Thank you.
We're going to go back into executive session. We had to reassess.
I make a motion to reconvene into executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, abstentions. Have a good night, everybody.